Regular meeting for May 11th, 2023 to order. As you can see here in front of you, we're missing a couple commissioners. Commissioner Johnson is off site with work and family related items. And Commissioner Percy has just welcomed a new healthy baby boy to his family, 10 pounds, five ounces. So we're, we're very happy for he and Katie. Having said that, we do have a quorum, so we can go ahead and move forward. I'll turn things over to Commissioner Brain for indication.
All right, dear Lord, thank you for allowing us to be here tonight. As Mayor Flowers said, we're celebrating this week, the arrival of Elijah Percy to new parents, Commissioner Percy and wife Katie. We're excited that everyone is healthy and we pray that they continue to thrive and enjoy their new venture in life. And Lord, we also pray that you are with us tonight as we do the town's business. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen. All right, so next up is the approval of the agenda. Do I hear motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
All right, I've got a question in a second. Any discussion before we move to vote? All right, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, and. Goes on. And that is unanimous. We'll move along into the public hearings. The first item under public hearings is item A annexation petition 2023-1 for Welch Chichiban Fleming Road. I'll go ahead and open the hearing to the public and turn things over for staff report. Is there any additional items that we need to be made aware of, Mr. Page?
I'm aware of any, there was a scheduling mishap with the advertisement for last month, but it was all done appropriately and is ready for public hearing now.
Okay, all right, having heard that, I will go ahead and open it up to any comments from the public. So that was not citizens' comments? Okay, all right.
Well, that's what you signed up for?
Okay, what was yours, sir?
I'd like to hear the staff report first since it's in order that way.
I don't think there was any additional items under the staff report other than they've applied for annexation.
That's great, they applied for annexation. This is the, the final step in the annexation process. It's for the 66 acres out Fleming Road that was rezoned to Business Park CP at our meeting in January or February.
Good evening, everyone. I wanted to talk a little bit about the potential impacts associated with this 400,000 square feet of commercial facilities. Right now, we have a situation where a lot of the truck traffic is being diverted away from other parts of the town, primarily 96, and they're using Fleming to bypass this town. And then they turn onto either some of the side roads, which they're not supposed to because of the ordinance, but they do, as well as, of course, Tarboro, and they either go left or right. But that truck traffic is increasing considerably since when we first moved there. And last week, I was going into town to the post office and there was a truck on my way. I don't know which company, because I wasn't familiar with it, that actually I had to pull off the side of the road. And sometimes the road is, is six inches drop. And in those, you get really nervous because your wheels go off. And if you're going anything more than 10 or 15 miles an hour, it's really scary. And you can't stay on the road because there's only two inches of asphalt on the opposite side of the white. So if they're on your side of the road, you have to move over. And the same day, it happened to one of my staff who was on the way to the office. And she, it was a different truck and it was a different direction, but it was on Fleming Road. And, and then we ended up calling DOT because of it and the city and said, look, this is going to cause a problem if we don't address the truck traffic. With 400,000 square feet, I can only imagine how many additional trucks are going to be on Fleming Road. I understand the, the need for these business complexes, but adjacent to main arterials makes sense, or the 95, or the 85. It makes sense, but not on a 1950s country road. It's very circuitous and, and doesn't have a lot of width to it outside the white solid lines. And it's really disappointing to know that that wasn't discussed at any length, other than Ms. Redd bringing it up. But it's going to cause a real incident because it's already bad now. And I wanted to make sure that whatever mitigation is required when it comes to traffic, primarily truck traffic, that that is taken into account because you're going to run into a real problem.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Were, were there any additional comments for the, from the public on the item A annexation petition for Welch Chichiban Fleming Road? All right, hearing none, I'll go ahead and close that meeting as of 7:06. And we'll move into item B, the proposed budget for fiscal year end 2024. I'll go ahead and open the hearing to the public as of 7:06 and turn things over for staff report.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. So the April agenda packet for the Youngsville Board of Commissioners contained a draft budget proposal made by the town administrator. The draft annual fiscal year 24 budget anticipated no new taxes, but also no tax cut. At the meeting, Mayor Flowers requested a proposal that includes a tax cut for fiscal year 24 be presented to the board for their consideration. The town's department heads requested funding significantly in excess of the manager's recommended budget by about $450,000. If fully funded, this would result in an increase of the tax rate by 0.157 for a new rate of .812 per hundred. As the board had requested, the attached proposal includes a tax cut of 0.015, which would reduce our tax rate to 0.64. I know that's a lot of numbers. It's lower than it was last year by 1.5 cents, the way we measure it, right? This results in a reduction of revenues and core funding expenses of approximately $43,000. There is also the fee schedule that we would adopt as a part of this. There were some last minute changes that we made today to add a permit fee for temporary outdoor sales, which would include things like food trucks, or if somebody wanted to do something along that line. And then there were some clarifying edits to the way site plan development was defined to make it more comparable to the YDO. The, the fees that are in there include a site development plan review major for $1,000, a site development plan minor for 550. And then when they got to the site construction plan review, if you had less than 5,000 square feet, it was 350, and it would step up to the maximum being 850 for those that were over 20,000 square feet.
Okay. Thank you for that. Having heard that, I'll go ahead and turn things over and open it up to comments from the public. Do we have anyone in attendance that would like to make a public comment on proposed budget fiscal year end 2024? All right, hearing none, I will close that public hearing as of 7:08 and move along into citizens' comments. And we did have one individual that wanted to make a citizens' comment tonight. So I'll turn things over to Mr. Mason Rizzo, 204 East Franklin Street.
204 East Franklin Street, that is right. Hello, community members. Mason Rizzo, raised in Franklin County, 204 East Franklin Street. I almost been hit by a couple of his trucks. But I would rather talk about literally anything other than downtown traffic. So I am approaching you guys as a volunteer to be the community sponsor and champion for a no-mow ordinance adoption. And what I mean by that is, I mean, I'm sure you guys have a municipality newsletter that you read or something like that. The no-mow grassroots movement, right, there's a pun? You know, is starting to shape small communities like Youngsville. I think we are at an intersection where we can obviously be a community that is more interesting, a place that people don't just speed through the stoplights to get to, you know, Wake Forest, right? Nobody wants to, wants to be Wake Forest little brother. So what I'd like to do is figure out a way to be the community champion, work in tandem with Mr. Page, Ms. Hurd, and all you guys, and concentrate on opportunities to temporarily suspend or, or, or perhaps amend the ordinance section 6.104.2. I brought my, my citation, so you guys can sign it after my presentation, if you'd like. And I'd like to know what, what I can do to, to be helpful in that, in that adoption.
If I can ask a clarifying question, please stop the clock really quickly. So when you say no-mow, right, are we, are we referring to not cutting grass at all? Like, what, what exactly would no, what does no-mow entail?
Yeah, I think that's a great, I think that's a great question. And I think that there are, you know, pockets of ambiguity that we want to, to figure out over time, right? But essentially what I mean is, at the homeowner's discretion, within the geographical boundary of whatever this section, you know, stipulates, be given the autonomy to let some of the wildflowers in the yards go unsuppressed. If manicuring the lawn isn't as important as the pollinators that the wildflowers attract.
Okay. It's an interesting concept. And, and the reason why I say that is because we, we've got scenarios where we definitely have pockets of either businesses or individuals who clearly do not cut at all.
Sure.
And then we've got some scenarios where, like you're talking about, for like pollinating flowers and bees and honeybees and bumblebees and stuff like that, to be able to attach to. Is this something that we can just kind of follow up with him later on and see if there's workarounds for potential, like for his property? Because, so for instance, and I'm not trying to pick on a business owner, but there was a business owner in Five Points here recently that I had to mention to Mr. Page, and the weeds were about three feet tall.
Yeah.
So the balancing piece of that is what's upfront present from a property perspective, property owner perspective versus the overall, I guess, curb appeal and how that looks. So if there's some protected areas, I mean, maybe there's, maybe there's some work, I don't want to say workarounds, but maybe there's some back and forth that we can figure out to, to help kind of mitigate and manage that.
Sure. Not to, not to offend those who, who write the, the ordinance language, but even if it's just a matter of working with the town to perhaps add a little more specificity to what constitutes a noxious weed, versus a true pollinator attractant. Even if it's working with, with Mr. Page and, and, and all of you on the adoptive dialogue, right, that isn't quite as nebulous. Maybe it's getting a community signature campaign. Really, whatever, I'm happy to be part of the community conversation.
Okay.
All right, that's my proposal, is to, is to start that dialogue with the town and, and with the council.
Okay, sounds good. Well, I appreciate your time and we can certainly set something up to follow up and get some, some follow-up action items in place. And hopefully it'll be something helpful for you and helpful for us as well, and we'll go from there.
Cool.
Thank you so much. All right, do we have anyone else in attendance that would like to make a public comment? Or a citizens' comment, sorry? All right, hearing none.
About no-mow May, Julie and I happen to know each other in May because of the pollinators from the ecosystem and the wildlife. It has to do with protecting the water. See, that's the whole point of no-mow May, because most of the seeds and most of the flowers bloom at that time. They benefit most of the pollinators, we spend feet up the entire food chain. So there's actually a reason behind it. I wanted to just remind you about the, the 68 acres that we were clear cutting because of a Zoom call I had a few days ago. In the next several decades, almost every municipality, every county is going to be required to do carbon budgets. And they're going to have to come up with areas that are going to store and supply their carbon because of climate issues. And inside forest canopy is going to be clearly one of the easiest ways to do that, the low-handed fruit. And by having track after track just continue to get clear cut, you are reducing your carbon budget potential and making yourself more vulnerable where you're going to probably have to buy carbon credits as a city. And these things are going to happen whether you agree with climate change or not. And you might as well start planning because you're going to need to actually start putting land aside to protect that because I don't foresee people reducing their emissions down to two on equivalents per year. I think the average is about 14 to 16 right now. So you're going to need carbon, and you know all these statistics, you know what's coming down the pipeline. So, I mean, it's bad enough, we're going to lose about 30 species on the planet. So let's try to at least have your taxpayers not have to fund carbon credits by protecting forests.
Thank you, sir. Do we have any additional citizens' comments before we move along? All right, hearing none, we'll move along into the consent agenda. And the action requested for the consent agenda is to approve consent agenda as submitted. Do I hear motion to approve?
Make a motion.
Thank you.
All right, got a first and a second. Any discussion before we move to vote? All right, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
And any opposed?
Aye.
All right, that motion carries. So item six, old business. Item A under that is the annexation ordinance 2023-1 Welch Chichiban Fleming Road. Action requested here is to adopt annexation ordinance 2023-1.
Do I hear motion to adopt that annexation ordinance?
Moving to approve, to adopt annexation ordinance. All right, got a first and a second. Do I hear any discussion before we move to vote? All right, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
All right, and any opposed? That motion carries. Item B, fiscal year end 2024, proposed budget with a tax rate of .64 per $100 valuation. Action requested here is to approve fiscal year end 2024 budget with a tax rate of .64.
Mr. Mayor, if I may for that one?
You absolutely may.
Using the suggestion which you hear that would also do the fee schedule.
Okay. Well, I can't make the motion, so do you want me to hand it to Mayor Proton Brain and, okay? So before we discuss any further, I mean, are there any questions, comments, or concerns from the commissioners? You know, I brought this up at the last meeting. You know, we got about, what, between 2,000 and 2,200 residents in the town of Youngsville. I think we all know that the cost of living for everyday life, from groceries to gas to everything, is a lot more expensive. And the hope with reducing the tax rate was to kind of mitigate a little bit of the, the tax burden that our citizens have to pay. It's been very well reported that, you know, the tax rate was increased several years ago because there's a lot of stuff that we needed to do. I feel like because we've had really good leadership and management here with the town of Youngsville, we're in a position where if we need 43,000, we could do a lot of stuff with that. But when it comes to, again, the people that are at this table paying taxes and the people that are here in the town that have that burden, Mr. Rizzo being one of them. I will say I have cut my grass this year. I hope you don't get offended by that. But, you know, from a, from a tax perspective, whatever we can do to kind of help ease that burden, I think is something that we, we truly need to do. So I'll just kind of say that and then open it up to the commissioners if they've got any additional, you know, questions, comments, concerns, or anything like that before we move forward.
I'll, I'll say that when I was running for office and after I got in, you know, all of our neighbors were saying, hey, let's do something about that tax rate, you know? Everybody wants lower taxes, obviously. And we'd been talking about it every year since I've been in. And we were in a position to do it, but we had the restrictions due to the COVID relief funds where it made sense to leave the rate as is, or we would be forfeiting a million dollars, I think it was. So now that those two years have passed and that we're able to do it, I'm glad that we're able to do it. And I just question to you, Nathan, you know, I know we, we asked for this. Like, we're, just want a confirmation that we're not hamstringing ourselves here. Just want to make sure we're not putting ourselves in a bad position, is what I'm saying.
I think that the state of the town is very strong. We did cut a significant number of line items. If you look at the inside summary of the budget that's in your piece this time, it has that list of things that a portion of it was cut from. And I know that y'all just have the digital version, so you looked at them previously, but the pieces that were cut was we cut a couple hundred dollars for training for the board of commissioners, a few hundred dollars from continuing education for the administrative staff. We paid for, we had discussed previously the bond item for the new finance officer. We were able to handle that in this fiscal year, so we weren't have to handle it in next fiscal year. That one was substantially savings, like $5,000. We reduced the expenditures that we could spend to maintain the cemetery, but it is still higher than it's been in the past. And we're just anticipating maybe taking out a few more trees to make it easier long-term to maintain. I found that we hadn't spent as much as we were expecting to maintain the Public Works Building, so there was a small reduction in the anticipated maintenance fees for the Public Works Building next year. There's more, but those are the types of things that we did. So we did go through it very, very carefully and scraped it a little bit, but it, it leaves the town in a very strong position. And as you're aware, the fund balance has been growing for a while. So if I made a mistake with my projections and we use a little bit of the fund balance this year, we can correct next year. We're, we're in a very financially sound space.
Thank you.
All right, any additional questions, comments, concerns?
How much is this reduction actually going to help the average taxpayer?
Probably roughly a couple of hundred bucks.
Is that pretty fair? It depends on how much they were, how much their entire house was worth. And I wish that I could tell you the average home price in Youngsville, but one, they're moving so quickly, and two, it's hard to find a data set that does Youngsville and not the 27596 zip code. So I don't have a firm number for you, but I can say that the reduction from 65.5 to 64 should be about 2% of their taxes reduced.
Mr. Redd, do you have anything you need to add? Um, I feel pretty, maybe I shouldn't say this, I don't know, Carrie, if I go overboard, this is off the record, but while other municipalities are kind of struggling and, and rates are going up in other places, we're able to continue to do the things that we do to, you know, support our citizenry and still give them a little bit of a tax break. And to me, it's a slam dunk. So again, the action requested here is to approve fiscal year end 2024 budget with a tax rate of .64.
I move to adopt the resolution adopting the proposed budget for the town of Youngsville fiscal year 2024, the fee schedule for fiscal year 2024, and setting the fiscal year 2024 tax rate for Youngsville at, oh man, there's 64 cents to.
Per hundred.
Per hundred.
All right, we got a first, do I hear a second?
Second.
All right. Got a first and a second. Any discussion before we move to vote? Commissioner Johnson, do you have anything you wanted to add?
No, sir.
All right. So hearing no discussion, I'll call for a vote, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
And any opposed? Motion carries going into item seven, which is new business. Proposed Franklinton, Youngsville annexation and extraterritorial jurisdiction agreement. Mr. Page, did you want to speak to that pretty quickly?
Just that we've been working with the town of Franklinton to come up with a line. We have a draft line. I believe we put it in your packet, but I can't remember. I'll, I'll email it to everybody again. But the, the line is between the two of us. It's roughly halfway, but not exactly. It, it jogs a little here and there due to topography or major roads, that sort of thing. There are some places where Franklinton is upset and feels like we win. There's a couple of places where we feel like we're upset and Franklinton wins. So it's a compromise where everybody is okay with it, which I feel like is the right thing to do. It would settle the line of agreement between the two of us for a period of time. I think the draft agreement is 20 years.
20 years.
And then it would have a clause that the boards could mutually agree to renew the agreement at some point in the future, much like the board has done in the past with Wake Forest and is going to do again at some point in the next three years. We'll, we'll redo the line of agreement with Wake Forest.
Okay. All right, any questions, comments, concerns for Mr. Page? All right, hearing none, the action requested here is to schedule a public hearing for June 8th, 2023.
Make a motion.
Aye.
Got a first and a second. Any discussion before we move to vote? All right, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
And any opposed? Motion carries. Item B, special event permit application, Youngsville Summerfest and Octoberville Burnt Barrel and Journey Food Pantry. Action requested here is to adopt resolution approving public sponsorship of special events.
I move to adopt resolution approving public sponsorship of special events for Octoberville. Youngsville Summerfest and Octoberville, sorry.
All right, we got a first, do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion before we move to vote? I will say the food truck rodeo this past weekend was stellar. Very well, very well attended and, yeah, looking forward. I've always liked events like this. So if there's no other discussion from the commissioners, I'll call for a vote, all in favor?
Aye. Aye. Aye.
All right, and any opposed? All right, motion carries. Item eight, reports another business. I get to go first. We did the National Day of Prayer on the fourth. They're a faith Baptist. It was, it was a very moving event and knowing that so many people in the community care and want to see us thrive and do well. Faith has always been an extremely good partner with the town with all, all the things. From a parking perspective to housing, you know, Halloween events and, and, you know, trick or treat, Easter egg hunt, all that stuff. So they're an extremely, extremely great partner with the town of Youngsville. We did get a chance to tour the legislature on the third. They had a lot of hot button items that they were anticipating that day. So we didn't get the full tour with the archives and all of that stuff, but I definitely want to reschedule and be able to do that. Commissioner Brain and I were able to play in the Franklin County Chamber of Commerce event today to raise some funds for those guys. And I think we got our money's worth with the swings. Oh, yeah, is that a pretty fair assessment? We swung at the ball a whole lot, but we had a good time and getting something. If I am or not, I think that's all I have for right now. And I'll turn it over to Commissioner Redd for your report. All right. Commissioner Redd?
Want to second the comment about the food truck rodeo. Thought it was great. It's nice to have that, you know, the whole community there and one. that, you know, the whole community there in one location now with Home Slice open too. Just got a lot of, you know, open space in there. It's, it's fun. Had a lot of families and, you know, a lot of food. I ate way too much. Tried to just spread the love and could only hit about four food trucks and I was done. So the old YABBA Business Expo, remember that YABBA has now merged with Franklin County Chamber of Commerce. And I'm glad that it's so soon that they are continuing the, the expo and that is scheduled for June thirteenth here at Faith Baptist. Do not have the time on me right now, but
I think it normally starts like four.
Yeah, it's like four to six or something like that. Let me see if I can.
We can post that on our Facebook page.
Yeah. So so that'll be coming up, that'll be good. And we'll, we'll have another meeting before then or yeah, we've got a meeting on the eighth. So I'll remind them. And that's all I have.
Okay. All right. Commissioner Wiggins?
I'm good.
All right, Commissioner Johnson?
Uh, really nothing except the, the opening day ceremonies out of the, out of Luddy, a lot of people, good thing.
Well, I appreciate your daughter stepping in to be a photographer for me and, and muddy the mud cat, so. Please extend my appreciation for that.
Absolutely.
Thanks so much. Turn things over to our town attorney.
Our charter has crossed over into the Senate. It's been referred to the Rules Committee, and so we're just going to wait and see what the committee does with it. Beyond that, we will have some new policies and other proposed changes coming for you this summer, but nothing else, no other public business report right now.
Okay. Thank you for that. And turn things over to staff reports. Mr. Page, did you have any updates for us?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. If I may ask Captain Bugsy to go first and talk about the traffic enforcement on our side streets.
Good evening, mayor, commissioner, citizen. Since April eighteen, which should be exactly twenty-three days, we sent the ordinance out to patrol division. We have conducted approximately fifty-one hours of concentrated commercial vehicle enforcement within the town. Resulting in two ordinance violations along with two notifications, which will be sent out to the owners of the commercial vehicles. During this period, officers also issued twenty-three citations and forty warnings to non-commercial vehicles. So this is just during the concentrated time outside answering calls and other business, the police department was. So we continue to work hard every day to enforce commercial vehicle ordinances. There was some training. Town, which the officer were not confident that the new order was answered because we have, the state has an evaluation system. So we did find some instances which is a procedural issue and we worked on it with training and we're getting there. So it's going to keep on looking good. Myself, the last three, four days I've been out on the streets to observe traffic, see if there's something going on. I was on Winston Street in the last, each day I would say about four to three to four hours each day during the afternoon. Pine Street, same thing, but post office, no trucks. So we are seeing improvement. I think the message is getting sent out there and hopefully we can just fill that. But we are not, we are as a police department, you know, pull back because of that. We still have a continuing force. We do have an, I think, a sign which came in for our grant purchase. I actually put it out today, it was here, we got, we got training yesterday. I put it out by the school on Oak Street. It says no food trucks. So I set up for that. I am going to every couple of days, I would say about a week, move it around to all the high traffic areas. Hopefully that sends the message out.
Yeah, I like it. So as we were heading to the, the Chamber of Commerce golf event today, we saw it and I was like, oh, they're getting queued up to, to start letting people know about the Five Points construction going on. And then obviously the sign flashed up and no through trucks. So yeah, I appreciate that heads up because I wasn't aware of that, but now certainly am, so.
This, this morning at eight oh three, a fifty-three foot tractor trailer came off Weston Street and headed north.
Okay.
And we go to, we were working hard yesterday, day before yesterday, I stopped on myself, got citations.
I know you can't get them all, but I'm just telling you, there's still some there.
Yep. We are, and we are constitutionally changing times up too. So what we are about to do, thank you for being honest, how we know that three to fours like that, we're going to move around a little bit for different times and we're going to shift change. So we're going to continue to work on.
Outstanding. Thank you, sir.
So Mr. Mayor, I had a few quick updates. The Main Street Improvement Project is going along swimmingly. Almost all the work is now at the intersection of Cross and Main, and that has significant portions of the project are already completed. They poured curb for much of the right turn off of northbound cross to go to Tarboro eastbound yesterday and today. It is impressive how quickly they can work when all the work is above ground and they have very limited below ground work to do first. The Five Points intersection that NCDOT is heading ought to be kicking off here very, very soon. There is a liquidated damages clause for them that kicks in about in August. So I would expect that to finish sometime early fall. However, we know that if something happens, those, NCDOT is more flexible with the dates than some other entities are. So Five Points should be finished quickly, but we can't promise any dates. We have heard nothing about the railroad grant. I reached out to NCDOT's rail division again this week, and we still haven't heard anything. We're very hopeful. That should be announced prior to our July meeting. But it's just radio silence from them, no response to standing in quarters or anything. The meeting for tomorrow is at noon right here. I hope we see you guys here if, if you're available. And then I just had a special request. There've been a number of staff members that have lost members of their family in the last two months. And if you would just continue to keep us in your prayers and your thoughts, it's the folks who work for you come to work regardless of what's going on in their personal lives. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you for that. All right. Having said that, any additional comments from staff?
Just as y'all are out and about at these different events, if y'all take any pictures, if you'll send them to either me or Robbie for our Facebook Instagrams, we very much appreciate them.
I don't think you wanted to see any pictures of us golfing today.
I really think we
I really, I really though. I hit some, I hit some good shots and I hit a lot of bad shots. So we'll just, but you know, we
Keep that in mind if you'll get
I'll totally do that. Outstanding. All right. So item nine is closed session. We actually do have to go into closed session tonight for two separate items. Item A is North Carolina General Statutes forty-three dash three eighteen dot eleven. One, to prevent the disclosure of information that is privileged or confidential or not a public record pursuant to North Carolina General Statutes one oh six A dash one six eight. And also item B, North Carolina General Statute forty-three dash three eighteen eleven three, to consult with town attorney in order to preserve attorney-client privilege. Do I hear a motion to go into closed session?
Move to go into closed session.
All right, we got a first and a second. Any discussion before we move to vote? All right, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
All right, we're going into closed session as of seven thirty-eight. So the time is eight twenty-seven. We went into closed session for a couple of items as shown on the agenda here. We did take action on one item and to bring it into open session, and that is to authorize our town manager, town administrator Nathan, to negotiate a contract with Hearts of Law. Do I hear a motion? Sorry, that's okay. Do I hear a motion for the authorization of Nathan Pace to negotiate a contract with Hearts of Law?
Move to authorize.
Sorry.
All right, first and a second. Any discussion before we move to vote? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, and that is unanimous. Other than that, did I miss anything with that? Katie, okay. All right, last item is to adjourn. Do I hear a motion to adjourn? Second. Got a first and a second. Any discussion before we move to vote? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned as of eight twenty-nine. Thank you, guys.